It is May 7th. This is the City Council Regular Meeting and it is 5:32 PM and I'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bossmans.
President.
Mayor Buell.
Here.
Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Here.
And Counselor Yusef.
I'm here and I cannot hear you very well for some reason.
We hear you loud and clear, so that's good.
Okay, good.
All right, item two, introduction of translator.
Everyone, hoping you can hear my audio okay. If not, please let me know. As always, Diego Pons here with the CLC with my colleague, Lisa Torres. We're going to use simultaneous interpretation here on Zoom in English and Spanish. Whenever finishing the instructions in both languages, the interpretation gets started. You'll see that global icon will appear in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. That global icon will say interpretation. I'll ask you to please select it and to please choose your preferred language. And if you're joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet, look for the more button or the three dots button to select your preferred language this other way. So if you're not fully bilingual, I'll strongly encourage you to select your preferred language. And if you are bilingual, just feel free to listen to everyone in the original language. Let us know through the chat if you're having any issues. Thank you for that. Buenas tardes a todos y todas. Yo soy Diego Pons. Estoy aquí con mi colega Lisa Torres, aparte del CLC. Gracias por tenernos hoy en su reunión, donde vamos a utilizar a través de la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine de decir esto, se va a activar la interpretación y en ese momento usted va a poder ver el icono del globo de la tierra que irá a interpretación allá abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, elija ese icono globo de la tierra para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esta manera. Pero si hoy usted está asistiendo a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busca la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o tal vez el botón de tres puntos para que pueda elegir su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Así que si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le voy a aconsejar que elija su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Si usted sí es bilingüe, sientas que he escuchado todos hoy en su idioma original. Muchas gracias.
Excellent. Item three, opening remarks by mayor and council. We've been having a little hiccup with people signing up for public comments, so Ben is going to explain how to do that for those that want to do public comment.
Thank you, mayor. And this is just letting anyone know who's trying to register for public comment with the QR code. We, before this meeting, we enabled the Spanish translation and Google translation with that QR code. So if it's not letting you submit your answers on there, you can go ahead and there's three dots at the top. You can click that and then select go to original link. And then that will allow you to fill it out and submit it for public comment.
Excellent. Does anyone else have any opening remarks? All right. Next up, number five, city manager updates.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
Sorry. I couldn't get it unmuted fast enough. I just wanted to apologize for being virtual post-surgery and recovering. So thank you for allowing me to attend virtually.
Of course, we're glad you're here.
Thanks.
All right, city manager.
Yes, mayor and council just wanted to give you a heads up that I will be looking to schedule a study session at the beginning of our council meeting for the 21st, an hour study session. Normally, we don't have one on the second Tuesday, but we are at a part where I think to do some educational components for the council regarding a possible 2005 sales tax reauthorization election. We've had an opportunity to talk with some of our bond counsel as well as our financial advisors. And we have finished up on our presentations to the public regarding exterior and interior parts of the PD City Hall proposed building. So we just have an educational component, I think, that would be good for the council to just be able to have their questions answered from our legal counsel as well as our financial advisors on what a 2005 sales tax reauthorization looks like. Looking at just an hour before council, so 3:45 to 4:45 and then just be able to present. And there will be no direction, obviously, or decisions made, just purely educational. We'll have more time for direction and decisions in June.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up, committee, board, and liaison reports.
Sure. We had our Creative Economy Commission meeting last week. We talked about potential 32nd Street roundabout designs, which was cool to talk about and see some robust public input regarding that. We also spoke about the San Rita Park project and received some updates regarding how that was going. We also had Animus River Park, I'm sorry, Animus River Trail called Artist Initiated. And we received some great applications in addition to the Schneider Park called Artists for the bench and some artwork along the fence. So super excited to see how that is coming along. And then lastly, we talked, you know, fairly extensively about the Creative Economy Commission sunsetting process and then what that transition to the Durango Creative District looks like over the course of this year. So really good conversations there. Gil and I had the opportunity to go to Los Companeros. Thank you, Clancy, for helping initiate that. It was great to go meet with Enrique over there, the executive director. We discussed a lot of their important work and obviously much needed work within the community, serving the Latinx community. So that was really cool to kind of walk a couple of steps in their shoes and see what they do on a daily basis. Lastly, we had our county commissioners joint meeting where we discussed matters of mutual interest, kind of 250, 251, WWPF work and fairgrounds events. So, yeah.
Okay, so of course I attended all those meetings with Dave and it was really, we really learned a lot. So I'm glad about that. Okay, so basically on April 17th, we had the library board meeting. We discussed some of the outlook for the coming year and what some of the friends of the library doing and also our director Luke explained how they're going about keeping everything flowing really well there. On the 24th, also the joint meeting with the county. On the 29th of April, I had the RHA reception for the board members to meet the presenters for the conference that was going to take place on the 31st, which I attended at the hall. Is it the Holiday? Doubletree. God, everything changed. Okay. And that was the homecoming Southwest Housing Summit for the RHA, the first annual. And there was a lot of good presentations and basically they covered, you know, how different counties and cities are trying to deal with the housing issues in each of their counties and then what the outlook is for the future. And then on the April 30th, I went to the PD City Hall presentation of what may be expected at the the new development coming up. And I really learned a lot and I was glad that people came and they gave their input as to what they wanted inside. I gave my input about what I thought the city council should have there. And then Friday, May 4th, I went to Fort Lewis College at 4:15 to do the farewell reception for Tom Surdicus because he's leaving Fort Lewis College and that was a very, very special meeting. Then, of course, I went to the very special meeting on that evening, May 4th, for Mark, our attorney, that was his anniversary. And then I think that was all.
Is that all you did?
Yep, I think so.
Okay. I had two meetings I filled in at the airport commission meeting for Counselor Yusef because she had just had surgery. We, sorry, hang on, I'm pulling it up because I have notes somewhere potentially. Here we go. We had a construction update on Phase 1A. We also got a little update from Tony today. Just they're doing the bathroom renovations, adding two family restrooms and mother's nursing area. And so that's exciting. And we got the infrastructure, Colorado State Infrastructure Bank Loan Agreement review. We had talked about this back when I sat on the Airport Commission. And so it's kind of coming back around because they're getting ready to do Phase 1B. We will see that it was fully approved again by the Airport Commission and so that'll come to us, council at some point coming up. I'm not quite sure when. We talked about air service incentive programs. I guess federally, they're changing some of the requirements and regulations for air service incentive programs. And so we wanted to, our service wants to bolster our incentive program a little bit to potentially bring in new airlines or new routes and that sort of thing. So we approved that and talked through that. And then, yeah, Tony gave his airport director report. That was great. And then I also had my alliance meeting. The investors meeting will be next Tuesday, but the board meeting was last week. What did we talk about? One thing that you had asked about, we're still waiting word on the Dolar Ready Grant for childcare. But they did the Buell Foundation grant. They received a grant from them for $50,000 for the Childcare Strategic Plan. So that is great. And so hopefully we'll hear about that grant coming up. Catalyst Revolving Loan Fund, the terms are ready for review and approval by the RHA Board. And so I think that'll be going to them soon. Economic Development Incentive Program that we're getting updated on tonight, that was kind of a big topic of conversation at the Alliance Board Meeting because a lot of other, like the Ignacio Mayer and Bayfield, they were like, if it's approved and it's great, could we work with you guys to maybe like duplicate it in our areas? And so it might be a great way for collaboration within our communities. Just sort of throwing that at you, Tommy. Innovation Center, the Summit Series has potential funding and we'll know about that in May, which is great. We had a recap of the Housing Summit, which you talked about a little bit. 100 people attended. They had great sponsorships and tickets, so it made some revenue for the RHA, which is exciting. A lot of engagement, great questions. Funding Gap was a great topic of conversation. Catalyst Round Three closed last week, I think, and they're going into review. There was some, I think, a few good projects that came in for Round Three. We got our end of quarter one financial review on the Alliance with Carolyn. Project Run, I've talked about that before. Okay, great. The leadership session is full. They have 25 people. It is a great mix of female BIPOC multilingual participants. And so I'll be excited to hear how that goes. And then right now, the leaderships, or so that's the Leadership People segment and then the Leadership Strategy segment, which will be right behind that one. They have a few people registered, but that one still has openings and space. So if you're interested in, for your workforce to get some like leveling up and higher leadership training, I think it's going to be a great program. And then we cleaned up our bylaws. We added two more seats to the board. Yeah, so that was what I did. Melissa, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't. I just had a lot of recovery time here. So thank you all for covering me and being actively involved.
I hope you are healing and feeling better.
Thank you. I am. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Yes.
I'll give the update on the CC4CA, which is the Colorado Communities for Climate Action meeting on April 26th. It was covering engagement, primarily engagement and advocacy opportunities for communities. An interesting one was emerging technologies. And then I had another meeting on the 25th with the Region Nine. It covered finances and then the business loan fund to support businesses. We had updates on projects and funding grant updates, survey. There was program updates, reports on enterprise zones and then regional projects covering broadband and then EDA grant for broadband equipment. Some topic was insurance for the region and then economic development updates, including SORT and Regional Industry Convenor presentation. And that's all I had on that one.
All right, moving on. Item seven, public comment on agenda items only. Items eight, nine, 10, and 11, can we have the video for public comment?
Public comment is encouraged on specific items published on tonight's agenda. These items will be announced by the mayor. Public comments on non-agenda items come later in the meeting. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your full name, the agenda item you intend to speak on, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango, make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by the council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters on tonight's agenda. Profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to published agenda matters or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits.
Okay, do we have any public comment on agenda items?
And mayor, I see, excuse me, two individuals signed up to speak about item 10.1. And the first individual is Julie Cooley.
Okay, so wait, item 10.1 is a public hearing and so we're going to do public comment during the public hearing for 10.1. Is that good? Okay, excellent.
Then there's no one else wishing to speak right now under this section.
Perfect. Moving on to the consent agenda, maybe have a reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor. Under item 8.1, approval of meeting minutes. Item 8.1.1 is approval of minutes from the April 16th, 2024 City Council or Regular Meeting. Item 8.1.2 is approval of minutes from the April 22nd, 2024 City Council Special Meeting. And there was no items under 8.2, final reading of ordinances. Under item 8.3, adoption of resolutions by consent. 8.3.1, which is approval of a resolution to extend terms of Jay Egan and Lori Mininger serving on the Board of Ethics until current business is resolved, submitted by the Clerk's Office. There are no items under 8.4, approval of other administrative items. No items under 8.5, land use and development action items. Under item 8.6, request for public hearing. 8.6.1 is a request for public hearing and introduction of ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding minor updates to floodplain program and other code provisions. That's scheduled for May 21st, 20, May 21st, 2024, submitted by Community Development. Item 8.6.2 is a request for public hearing and introduction of ordinance for an easement for La Plata Electric Association to service the Durango-La Plata County Airport, scheduled for May 21st, 2024, submitted by Community Development. And that's it.
Excellent. Does any counselor wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Counselor Yusef.
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans.
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yasi.
Yes.
All right, that gets us to item 10, land use and development. Can we have a reading of 10.1?
Item 10.1 is a public hearing for first reading of an ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding the Fair Share Program and Administrative Manual submitted by Community Development.
All right, staff presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Eva Hinson, Housing Innovation Manager. Staff is pleased to present to council an improved and modernized approach to the city's inclusionary zoning program called Fair Share. This is the first reading of an ordinance regarding proposed text amendments to the Fair Share Program and the Land Use and Development Code, along with updates to the Fair Share Administrative Procedures Manual. This applies to the affordability and economic opportunity and financial excellence in high-performing government and also the housing plan to amend the Fair Share ordinance to make more effective and easier to administer. I'll provide an overview for you this evening. Fair Share Inclusionary Zoning was adopted back in 2009. That was 15 years ago. In December 2023, council adopted a limited suite of Fair Share amendments with the goal of providing more flexibility and working with developers and reducing the barrier of no third-party subsidies allowed. This also made it possible to bridge the cost disparity between rental and home prices and utilize housing funds to facilitate and incentivize unit construction and leverage local, state, and federal funding opportunities. The city was awarded a grant by the Department of Local Affairs to also assist the city in this work to improve and enhance our inclusionary zoning program. Responsive to state legislative changes related to inclusionary zoning policies, engagement with city staff and local developers and stakeholders, best practices and other inclusionary zoning programs throughout Colorado, and feasibility and market analysis to inform recommendations tailored to Durango. This program is not the only tool in our toolbox to address housing and affordability, but it is an important one that addresses it through new development. Key objectives of the proposed changes are to extend the program to include rental. This also allows us to be compliant with state law. Incentivize developers to construct fair share units. Incentivize developers to construct fair share units rather than paying the fee in lieu. Simplify the program to improve transparency for developers and reduce administrative burden and ensure the program does not create barriers to the production of affordable and attainable naturally occurring housing prices. With this slide, I'll kind of have council focus probably on the right hand side of your screen. The other two columns focus on our current fair share program, what the objectives were to make these modifications or recommendations to the program, and where do we land with what's proposed before you this evening? We want to increase the required number of units that triggers fair share from four to nine. That also aligns with the governor's policy for 2026 and the roadmap to encourage infill density and not be a barrier to the small guys that are building development within Durango. We also want to add rental development, as I mentioned, aligning with House Bill 21-1117 that passed in May of 2022 with the governor's signature. We want to decrease the required set aside percentage from 16% to 12%. And I'll dive a little bit more into council of why we're proposing that change. Income averaging for a mix of units for flexibility. Reduce set asides for deeper AMIs. We also are including an exemption option of how to work through fair share and not pay a fee in lieu and not have to build fair share units is another option. We also want to update the fee and loo methodology from affordability gap to construction development cost. And we'll explain the rationale behind that. Providing compliance options, again, navigating this, the last 15 years, the program was rigid. We want to provide flexibility and also opportunities to update where needed with market conditions, which we didn't have that flexibility with the program before. And also standardize financial incentives and add development zoning incentives. What this slide will demonstrate, when we want to talk about that reduction in affordable units, why are we proposing the 16% to 12%? We want to encourage onsite production of units and align with also adding that rental component so that the bases are aligned for both developers who are navigating building within Durango. We also want to, I think also the higher set aside has proven a burden to actually building the units. As that construction cost increased, it's become more challenging for developers to build those units. 12% is manageable, especially with an average of an 80% area median income target, along with the incentives that we are proposing. We want to eliminate price tiers. No one understood them. Nobody knew what they meant. Nobody understood what a median income was. So we've addressed that. We want to set the default affordability target for an average of 100% area median income. What does this do? It aligns us also with not only our housing needs analysis, but it also aligns with Proposition 123. We also want to do 80% area median income average for rental. This is slightly above low income housing tax credit projects like the residences at Durango. But it also is slightly above Proposition 123 as well, but it fills the gap between existing subsidies and market rate production, the missing middle that we've been talking about, trying to meet the need for our local workforce. And this slide demonstrates as well, what does that equilibrate to? Housing, but also getting housing built and fair share units created. So that combination, we are confident that hopefully we can achieve those, both of those goals. With this slide, the Fair Share Program currently uses the affordability gap method. But staff is proposing to use the development cost method to reinforce getting fair share units built. The development cost method bases fees on the actual cost to develop affordable units. The idea behind this fee is that the market rate developer chooses not to build the fair share units. They should fund the full cost of the city having to build those units. Root policy use data from the National Association of Home Builders and Marshall and Swift Construction Data to produce the figures within this table, as you can see. The fee and loop proposed for single family home construction would be $434,307. The fee and loop for multifamily, which would include rental condominiums and also townhomes, would be $398,809. But the key takeaway from this slide is that to note that the increase paired with the decrease in set aside minimizes that net impact regardless of the 16% or the 12%. With this slide, we want to propose standardizing our financial incentives. How do you want to facilitate unit construction? How do we want to use the housing funds within our budget to help create these units? So we're proposing a $15,000 per fee or per fair share unit constructed in rental developments, along with our multifamily developments, and a flat fee of $18,000 per unit constructed for for sale product. We also packaged before you zoning incentives, including parking reduction, density bonus, as well as prioritized review that sets again us up to align with Proposition 123 with expedited review commitments that we'll have to adhere to in 2026. This has come before council quite a bit, so I couldn't fill all of those dates before you this evening. But wanted to highlight that this is the first reading of this ordinance. It will come back for council for a final reading on May 21. And then we wanted to give ourselves time between June and September to give staff time to develop capacity, administrative processes needed to administer the retooled program, along with community outreach and education on this program. And with that too, we also got our grant extended with DOLAC, so that will be closed out at the end of October, so all of those things will be completed prior to that. Staff finds that the proposed amendments meet all of the applicable criteria to amend our land use development code text amendments. No advanced public comment has been received prior to this hearing with City Council. The Community Development Commission heard the item on March 25, 2024, and provided input and helped shape the final documentation before you and voted unanimously to approve. And with that, I'll open the public hearing with you all, questions and the motion for it.
Excellent. All right, so I will open the public hearing. And so if you're here to, or some people signed up to speak on 10.1? Oh, okay, thank you.
I move to open the public hearing for first reading of an ordinance for land use and development code text amendments regarding the fair share program and administrative manual.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yazi.
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
And Councillor Bosmans.
Yes.
And the first individual we have to speak is Julie Cooley.
Good evening. I am Julie Cooley. I live in Durango, and I'm also on the NINA Board, the Neighbors in Need Alliance. And I just want to really thank the city and Eve for her amazing work. I think that this is a much better approach. I was involved, oops, I was involved back in 2009, and I didn't feel like we had it wired then. This feels like a program that will get us more housing. And I think that it's also, it's kind of a carrot and a stick for the developers. I like that the rentals are included now. As we all know, rentals have been a, rent, the cost of renting here has gone up so much that it really is impacting a lot of our working people. People who have had to move elsewhere because even though they were making enough money that they were over the 100% AMI, it was like, you know, we're just struggling. We're never gonna be able to buy a house here. We're leaving. And I don't want to see that happen. We've got enough gray hairs in this town already. We need to keep the young people here. But I think that Eve has been a great addition to the staff, and I really support her and the work that you're all doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
And the next individual is Pam Moore.
Good evening. My name is Pam Moore. I am a City of Durango resident. I'm also the Executive Director of the Homes Fund. And we've been getting the proceeds from the fee in lieu payments to provide down payment assistance to locals. I will tell you, we've created 44 new homeowners. We've put $1.1 million of mortgage assistance out. And the average AMI of the families we've helped with that money is at 93%. But we do support this rewrite of the Fair Share Ordinance. It's written right now where it's just much easier to pay the fee than build the unit, and of course, we need the unit. We do appreciate that it's now including rentals, that it's a simplified formula. And I think, as Julie said, and all this hard work that the housing department has been doing, it's really gonna make it clearer for developers and what they're going to do with their projects. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else?
And Mayor, there is no one else who's signed up to speak for item 10.
All right, I will close the public hearing. Can we get the motion back up on screen? And do we have an ordinance number? Do we need an ordinance number?
We wouldn't assign the ordinance number until the final reading.
Okay.
I move to approve ordinance 0-2024-RemainsToBeSeen to update Chapter 5, Article 5-4, Fair Share Housing with the finding that the proposal complies with the criteria for text amendments as described in the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code.
Second.
Council discussion.
I said a quick question, Eva. The $15,000 to $18,000 for the financial incentive back per fair share unit, is that more of like a rebate on a permit fee or a fee paid to the city initially? Or could you clarify that piece, please?
Yes. So that analysis, we actually used a calculation based on the development fees that are due at time of issuance of building permit. We have structured it ideally to try and do a waiver. Certainly don't want to make this taxable income for our developers that are trying to achieve building fair share units. We do have a mechanism in the city that we can actually reappropriate those funds after the fact to reallocate those back to some of the enterprise funds and other funds that have to be paid that we can't waive. So that was taken into consideration. We wrote it as a rebate or waiver just for our flexibility purposes, but it is anticipated that we would try and waive those and then use housing funds to replenish where those funds need to be paid.
Awesome, thank you. And then kind of a follow up. So if we're hoping that more fair share units are being built and less fee in lieu, so how will the Homes Fund, you know, raise more capital to help out other homeowners that are looking for mortgage assistance? Will some of these waiver fees? Will that maybe kind of go into that kitty a little bit?
Yeah, so we, you know, we have been cumulatively collecting our fair share fee in lieu payments for the last probably two and a half years through the American Rescue Plan Act changes and amendments. The last two years, we were able to use that funding to help contribute to Homes Fund for Down Payment Assistance, again, leaving our fee in loose to accumulate in our bank account. So strategically, the last two years, we at least did that. We still have a partnership with Homes Fund. We're not anticipating, you know, changing necessarily how much funding we're contributing to them. They are actively looking for other funding sources as well. Proposition 123 is one of those components that I know Homes Fund has applied for that specifically targeted to down payment assistance programs that was just released a couple weeks ago, actually. So we'll see if we can hear on that as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Well, I'll make my little comment here. Thank you, Eva, for the update there. I think affordable housing is a key concern for many years now, especially for those that have incomes in the lower AMI brackets. In principle, I support a fair share ordinance that provides either affordable housing directly or funding as a long term source of revenue that can be supported, used to support adding affordable housing. I also support a fair share ordinance, including, that includes both units for sale and for rent and how some of the funds are used, such as mortgage assistance, I think is definitely needed. However, this is where we're going, the updated fair share ordinance remains complex. And I hear more often than not that the fair share ordinance is not a solution or part of the solution to affordable housing, but actually is part of the problem and a cause for the increasing costs of housing. The fair share ordinance, according to what we've seen, increases construction costs about 10% for all units that fall under the ordinance, either because the builder adds affordable housing or because they pay the fee in lieu. Adding 10% to the cost seems unfair to builders, who I assume will pass that on to buyers and renters. So if a housing unit is $500,000, the fair share ordinance would make it $50,000 more for every unit in their development. So that is reflected in the price for sale as well as in the rental rate. And I assume that also the properties in that area will use the comparison values, so their values go up because the new construction went up. And most importantly, a fee in loop payment is a one time payment, another structural, long term source of revenue. A one time payment may be good for current fund balances, but we have very significant fund balance across the board in our city. A voluntary transfer fee, which is a percentage added every time a property is sold, would be a long term source of revenue without significantly impacting the initial cost of development. It seems a voluntary transfer fee, which is also a regular approach, is not provided as an option in our fair share ordinance. And in my opinion, it absolutely should. As this would be a source of revenue that continues for future councils and staff to address housing needs in our community, so for many years. Lastly, if you look at the Housing Innovation Fund in general, the forecast budgets, which includes the fee in lieu payments, it seems mismatched with the various projects and fees we see. The same applies to how we spend those housing innovation funds beside Homes Fund, which to me is very concerning, and I believe we should do much better. So even though affordable housing is a key concern in our community and a fair share ordinance is a good tool to have, developments add either affordable housing or provide funding for affordable housing, the current fair share ordinance as written seems to be unnecessarily complex, overly expensive upfront, and not a solution to affordable housing, but more of a cost for the increasing cost of housing across the board. And I cannot support this.
Melissa, do you have anything to say?
Sure. First of all, I really want to thank staff, Eva and all of staff for their hard work in making some modifications to this program. I know that we've been talking about this for a long time, and I really appreciate the efforts at coming up with this. I know that you looked at this very carefully to come up with a fair and equitable solution that would encourage more built units on the ground, and I really appreciate that reduction to 12%. You know, these fair share ordinances have always been aimed to promote equity in our community by ensuring that the benefits and burdens of development are distributed equally amongst all of the residents of our community. And for that, I think it's, I think it's been very beneficial. We have a housing shortage very much so, and inequities in our community, and so we're trying to address that by these fair shore ordinances. So I just wanted to thank staff for their efforts in coming up with a new, new program, a new model that we might be able to work with. And I know that, again, you looked at it really carefully to be equitable for everybody and again, to promote more development for more, more units being built. Because we did see that so often in our old models, the units just were not being built, but fees were paid. So hopefully this will make a difference. I just want to thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Eva. This is Gilde Yazi, and I do sit on the Regional Housing Alliance Board, and I've seen the work that goes into creating new options for our current policies, and it's very difficult to come up with programs that reach out to all our different communities, like the rental community that it's reaching out to here, and also making this easier for our residents and our employees to navigate getting this kind of assistance with our housing budget. Yes, we do have a shortage of affordable houses here in Durango, and I do believe this this new update on our fair share program is going to make a big difference. So thank you very much.
We've been working on this a long time. Since I got on council, we've been talking about needing to do this. And through unanswered RFPs, trying to get it rewritten to you just when we didn't get anything, just going out there and trying to make it happen and doing exactly what we're kind of proposing in the fair sure ordinance, you constructed with different developers already. you constructed with different developers already. And we, it's like proven that it works. And it's proven that these solutions actually don't, like, we can absorb some of those increased costs that would go to housing with the incentives that we're giving developers, which we didn't use to do. So yes, we didn't use to give developers incentives. And the cost of houses would have to absorb that, and so they would go up. Now we have other avenues, and I'm so thankful for that, that we can try to keep all houses, not just the ones that are going to meet the AMI requirements, but all houses at the lowest rate possible. And the, you know, the townhomes that were just built is a proven success project of this plan. And so thank you for your hard work and finally getting it done, and it's here, and I'm so excited. Finally getting rental programs in. I so appreciate your hard work and your creativity and your flexibility. And yeah, so I'm super excited. Thank you. All right, can we have a vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
No.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes. Okay, 10.2, can we have a reading of 10.2, please?
10.2 is a resolution adopting a schedule for planning and building permit fees based upon the International Code Council from February 2023 Building Valuation Data, submitted by Community Development.
Evening. Evening, Mayor and Councillors. Daniel Murray, Development Services Manager. Thank you. There we are. The item before you is a proposed update to our fee schedule for building permitting. Forgive me, this goes dark on occasion. So for background, our building permit fees are one source of revenue that goes to the city, collected by Community Development, and that goes to our general fund. The fee offset, or sorry, the fees are intended to offset the cost of providing our building plan review as well as inspection to ensure compliance with our building code. And the ultimate goal there is public safety, to ensure our built environment is stable and enduring. The city has historically used the International Code Council, ICC, building valuation data to determine our construction costs. So a equation could be, we take the building valuation, we multiply that times our fee schedule, and that results in the building permit fee that is collected. And it also informs the use tax that the city collects. I'll note that it is just the valuations that are being updated. We're not adjusting our multiplier for our fees, nor are we adjusting our use tax percentages. So a little more explanation about our building valuations. We're currently using the 2013 ICC valuations. We adopted those in 2015. So it's typical that we're adopting the last year or a year off. Now, our proposal this evening is to update to the 2023 ICC valuations. And in your packet, there is a spreadsheet that shows a comparison of three scenarios, single-family, multifamily, and commercial. And I'll take a snapshot here and walk through, I think, single-family being the most relatable type of construction we have. So our current valuation of a single-family home, 1,500 square feet with a 400-foot garage, is $107 a square foot. The proposal is to update to 2023 valuations, and that's $167 a square foot. So the building permit fee increase in this case is $2,470. The total fee under these new fees would be $7,000 for a single-family home. Probably two observations you've made is that $167 is still nowhere close to the actual cost of construction in Durango. Nevertheless, these are national averages. ICC puts out the valuation table. They have a great explanation that's in your packet, saying, here you are jurisdictions. We collect data yearly. We provide this to all jurisdictions nationwide to use as they see fit to set their fee schedules. So this is a very objective way of being taking data that's available and applying it to our local permitting schedule. The other observation here, $7,000, knowing that the median home in this area is considerably higher, this is less than 1% of the cost of the home, just to put that in context. So these numbers are still recognized to be relatively low. First two points I've already touched upon, and then the other ones here, building permitting is relatively stable. Since I mentioned that we have the 2013 fees adopted in 15, if we were to be on a consistent five-year cycle, I think, not having been here, but in 2020, it was not the time to be updating fees, given all the other uncertainty that was occurring in our development and nationwide with COVID. So now relatively, we are in a new normal of what the development is occurring at, and it's relatively stable. Also, it is best practice to update fees. Council knows just as well, be it our utility structure or any of our ongoing fees for other departments, those are oftentimes even set to update automatically on an annual basis or by annual. So a five-year cycle is seemingly good practice for us, and we're going to be updating our building code in the next couple of years, so we can reevaluate what would be the appropriate fee schedule at that time. Also in your packet, we are updating some what we call flat fees. Not all fees are based on square footage, say a solar permit or a gas line permit. They're just a flat fee. They're updating from a very nominal amount of $15 to $75. Still trying to get close to accounting for staff time for inspections and plan review. And similarly, for some community development planning projects, we're updating those fees to reflect staff time and bringing projects to public hearings. So at a previous study session, we came before you all with this topic, and the request was made, can you compare revenue versus expenses for community development? So this table captures that three different ways. The first line is if we look just at building permitting fees, there is a revenue of $240,000. And if we try and just isolate the staff that are involved in building permitting, that's roughly three staff, and looking at their salary and benefits, you have their expenses at $310,000. So still a $70,000 gap with respect to revenue and expenses. However, no building permit happens in isolation. It's always preceded by a subdivision, zoning compliance, site plan review. Engineering is heavily involved in what we do. So if we continue to broaden our lens of what other permits is community development collecting fees for permits, the revenues do go up. We also have now capturing the 10 planners, if you will, in addition to our building inspectors. And so our revenues, our expenses have also gone up, looking at a roughly $1.5 million gap between revenue and expenses. If we were to look at all of community development, which I think is a little closer to what occurs in building permitting, we have, yes, increased revenue, because now we're looking at all revenue streams for community development. But there's also more staff involved, 16 full-time equivalent staff. And so the gap still exists, 1.7 million for revenue versus expenses. And this was actually a very useful analysis, because it demonstrates that not all departments generate funds. We acknowledge that the city provides a lot of services, some are subsidized, others are revenue generating. And our proposal is not to create a complete cost recovery permitting schedule. I think that would be very burdensome on our development community. So this paints the picture of what that would entail, and that's not at all what we're proposing. Rather, the proposal is to continue to utilize these very objective data sources for us to use national averages, keep our fee schedule current, and continue to add revenue to the city's overall puzzle of a balanced budget. So that's hopefully helpful in demonstrating some comparisons. The criteria for code updates, the building code is Chapter 6 of the municipal code. And within the building code, it is Section 109 that says the council shall by resolution adopt the fee schedule. So that's what we're doing with this action. And with respect to strategic plan goals, this does address financial excellence in high-performing government, more specifically, the long-term financial health of all funds and revenue streams that create long-term structurally balanced budget would be elements that are being accomplished here. And also looking at our comprehensive plan, I didn't expect to find anything with respect to fees, but it certainly says very explicitly that we shall continue to implement the International Building Code in sense that its value is ensuring the safety of our built environment. The process for this began over a year ago. We went to our code alignment working group, which was convened at the time. We've also come before you, as mentioned, for a study session in May. We went to our planning commission right after that. And public engagement continued through the fall of last year. We did a specific open house for a handful of comm dev-related items we were working on, including fee updates. We have taken every opportunity, anytime staff is presenting before our development community, we mention that the fees are set to be updated. And we also did a email notification. This image on the right side of the screen is just a one-page snapshot that we sent out to 160 members of our building community to let them know that this was on the horizon. We did not receive any public comment, no written public comment. We received some verbal comment that staff has taken into consideration. And so next steps would be, if it's adopted tonight, the proposal is for an effective date of October 1st of this year. That would be preceded by outreach and more preparation on our side for our permitting process. The reason why we are tying this implementation with the fair share and the fee offset is to ensure that these two objectives are being met. We are mindful that there is an increase of building permitting fees to the cost of construction. At the same time, we wouldn't want that to negatively impact the city's goals of more affordable housing. So as you just acted on, there is a fee policy offset that allows the city to waive fees for affordable housing projects, thereby meeting both objectives of affordable housing and maintaining some viable revenue for the city. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and our recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution, updating our permitting fees based on the ICC 2023 valuation data.
Excellent, thank you for the presentation. Do I have a motion?
Move for a resolution adopting a schedule for planning and building permit fees based upon the International Code Council, February 2023 Building Valuation Data.
Second, council discussion. Nope. You do? You didn't say. Okay, does anyone have public comment? Yeah, under number, I was like, that is not in the notes that we went over. You're just kidding. You don't get to public comment. You already did. All right, council discussion.
Thank you, Daniel, for the update. I remember the last meeting was almost a year ago, I think, when, let's see, it was yeah, a year ago, minus nine days. And when you presented this, and I remember that my comment being, why do we just increase the fees based on construction costs analysis from ICC compared to us? And at the time, I had asked you to provide some sort of understanding of actual costs versus revenues. So first, I wanted to thank you for putting that table in there that shows the expenses and the revenues and the breakdown by staff. And you mentioned it's 1%, yeah? The permit costs on average is 1% of the construction project cost. Is that correct?
Based on the median home value in this area, yes.
And so we have to put this in perspective, of course, but I just, some of these fees go up quite a bit, five-fold according to the package. And then if you look at the total revenues, building permit fees, they go up 40%. It's also what you presented. And that's quite a bit. So that's the first observation. The second one is you have in there the staff breakdown for the expenses. And I was just wondering, does that include the staff, is that only associated with building permits and zoning? Or is it also housing, fair share ordinance work, all that stuff?
Yes. Yeah, that was the progression. The revenues grew as we captured more expenses.
Okay. So in a way, I'm a little bit annoyed by this, because we complicate the structure and bureaucratic process versus simplifying it and streamlining it. And for example, the number of permits went down from 583 in 2018 to 400, so from 583 to 420 in 2022. And the costs didn't go down, but they go up. Or we add fees through the fair share ordinance, 10%, increase permit fees potentially. And then we have a whole other process to waive fees through, for example, another policy being the housing fee offset policy or the fair share ordinance. So we take with one hand, and then we give back on select projects with the other hand. And at the same time, we have more staff dealing with that back and forth. And I understand we have adequate funds across the city and budgeted to cover expenses this year. It's not likely we're going to be running out of money. With the fair share ordinance already increasing the cost for larger developments, I am just not sure if we should add another increase in the fees, even though I, I do agree with you that the fees should somewhat match the expense allocated to the work for those permit reviews and inspections. Yeah. I'm just thinking, is it worthwhile increasing annually, or is it because it's 1%, but it's just, just another layer of increases? I, I'm struggling with that a little bit. I think that's where I'm going to leave it.
I think increasing yearly might be a little bit more complicated and burdensome than just doing it one time. After 11 years, Mr. Murray, I think it's probably time to update that to be more reflective of the ICC standard and code. You know, I feel like there's, I see both sides, but I don't want housing costs to go up. But when we're talking about it, we're talking about fractions of percentages, and I think that's reasonable to ask, you know, those fees to be commensurate upon, you know, what, what the code says. And then, yeah, I, I feel like this is overdue. And I think there's probably going to be a little pushback from the development community. But again, this is something that I think, you know, hasn't been done for 11 years. And I think it's time to ensure that, that we're remaining, you know, competitive and keeping our, our, our fees competitive in comparison to other communities across the state. So yeah, I think doing it yearly would be more complicated and put more work on your shoulders to try to figure out what that assessment value should be on a year-to-year basis.
Melissa or Gilta? Any? Good.
Yeah, I would just add that, yeah, after 11 years, I think it's important that we update our building permit fees in the City of Durango, or any municipality for that matter. I think over time, the costs associated with processing permits, conducting inspections, and managing the administrative burden of construction changes. And clearly it has in our community, and updating the fee structures that we, you know, it ensures that we can cover the costs, our costs adequately without overburdening our taxpayers. I also think that it encourages compliance, encourages compliance with zoning requirements and safety standards, adherence to safety standards. So I think that's important. And I think that, you know, I think that I want to thank staff for taking the time to really think about how to structure these fees, because I think a well-designed fee structure program can support sustainable growth and development within our city by aligning the fees with some of our broader policy objectives, such as affordable housing and environmental sustainability. So I think in some instances, we do have to use these type of regulatory powers to shape our built environment in positive ways, and I think that that's what we're trying to do here. So I understand the need to update these fees, and after 11 years, I think it's, I think it's definitely time.
Okay, thank you very much for all your hard work on this. I, you know, appreciate getting it back in line after 11 years. I also appreciate, you know, being cognizant of what was going on five years ago when we didn't want to change fees. And so I think it is about time. Can we have a vote?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Counselor Bossmans?
No.
Okay, moving on to 10.3, Durango Mesa. Okay, moving on to 10.3, Durango Mesa action items, including a public hearing, two resolutions, and a first reading of an ordinance. We're going, just for fluidity, we're going to have the staff presentation for all the items. And then we're going to do one public hearing for all the items. And then after we close the public hearing, we'll go into each individual one for council discussion and a vote.
Mayor, yes, just right before we start, if we can, just recognize Vicki. We know that she is retiring in the future, not quite yet, but this could be her very last council meeting. And she has served this community for over 30 years. And we just want to have a moment here in the public with the council to thank her and really show our appreciation of her service to our community.
Well, Jose said it all, but I have been very fortunate to work with Vicki. For the last 10 years, I've learned a ton from her. She's a wealth of knowledge, and she's absolutely committed to Durango and has helped shape this community into the great place that it is. So thank you, Vicki, for your service, and I wish I could give you another standing ovation, but now you have to present your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was not expecting that. Sorry about that. I'm Vicki Vandergrift, planner with the city of Durango for another month, and then I am retiring. So this is sort of my last council meeting here. Oops, it's not working. Sorry, that did not work, so I'll use this, hopefully.
There we go.
We'll find a way. So tonight, there are three items before you, which was already mentioned. The first is a request to update the Durango Mesa area plan. The second is a request to approve the Durango Mesa Park preliminary plat. And the third one is a request to transfer a fee titled land to the Durango Mesa Park Foundation in exchange for easements. This is in alignment with our strategic plan under affordability and economic opportunity, enhanced livability and sense of place. So tonight, we're going to do the presentation, which you just already mentioned, so I don't go back through that. And then there are the three separate motions. So the Durango Mesa area plan was adopted in August of 2018. The purpose of the plan was to provide a guide for the management, planning, and development of Durango Mesa. And then the plan is being updated to incorporate the changes that have been identified as the plan begins to be implemented. So just to show you a picture of the Mesa again and how close it is to downtown and right off of Highway 3. And then this is a site that, and shows the lots. So Durango Mesa was cut into 35-acre lots. So there's a number of those, and each lot has a house site or building envelope on it, and they all have easements. And so one of the things we're going to talk about is changing this plat tonight. Just some photos, because I always like to bring photos of Durango Mesa. It's such a beautiful place. So the conceptual plan that was adopted in 2018 has the events, has an event centered down in the, on the north portion of it. I usually use a pointer, but I don't have one. So and above that, you have the, the smaller venue with a community barn. In the center, you have what was going to be the fairgrounds. Next to that is the bike park, and then over on the south side is where the fields were going to be. The city's going to build the fields. And this is what, again, the Mesa is. So the northern part is where the event center is. The very southern part is where the, the bike, sorry, the athletic fields are going to be. So there are some updates that happened. In 2019, the property was transferred to Durango Mesa Park Foundation. In 2021, the city purchased the property in Hip Horse Gulch, and the property was annexed into the city in 2023. So one of the first updates we did was a traffic study to see how Highway 3 and the Mesa worked together. The plan envisioned a roundabout that was determined not to be feasible. So the updated plan has a T intersection. This intersection has been approved by CDA, and we have an access permit. In addition to the access permit, we're working on the road, getting up to the top of the Mesa. The road design is almost complete, and it'll go out to bid sometimes later this summer. In addition to that, we're looking at some initial utility line work, because before we construct the road on top, we want to make sure we run some of the utility first. The emergency access road is out to bid right now, or just, I think it just closed. And so we're hoping to start construction on the emergency egress, which goes up through Bonds Construction off of Highway 3. And that road will be complete before they shut down the main road to do the major construction. The demonstration trails that I know you've all seen are, were built in 2023. The county, the city has easements on all of those trails. And then the county gave the city the trails that they owned on the property also in 2023. Some of the, where the trails that were just recently completed. Another thing that was done was a bike park master plan was completed, updated, and incorporated into their conceptual plan. That also includes the dog park and disc golf. And that will begin construction this summer, and then the first phase should be done in 2025. As for up, now one more update or a couple more updates, I guess. If one is a change in partnerships, so the plan addresses the fact that there's different people involved in the development and use of the Mesa. And then the fairgrounds is not moving up to the Mesa anymore. And finally, the implementation schedule was revised based on all the items above. You can see there's part of the park is being shown, the bike park is being shown along with the roadways. So the preliminary plat, the second item on, that we want to talk about, same, the same slide, it shows all those 35-acre lots. So those are going to be eliminated as a part of this preliminary plat. And in addition to that, all the building envelopes and the easements, access easements are vacated. The trails were going to be converted to easements, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And then right of way will be dedicated as well as utility easements. And the number of lots will be changed down from 56 to 16. So the plat shows that there are larger parcels of land. You can see the right of way and through the center. And then again, all the easements or all of the access easements and the building sites will be eliminated. The last thing I want to talk about was the transfer of fee title. And if you look at this plat, you can see the trails kind of going through the property line. Again, I can't really point, but the idea behind this is fee titled land actually cuts those lots. And so if we kept the trails as fee titled, we'd have all these little odd-shaped lots all over the place. So that didn't make a lot of sense. So we're going to give the property back to the foundation. And then at this, literally, we will record easements right after we record the deeds. And then there'll be easements for everything, just like we have for the other trails that we constructed last year. So in summary, there are the three items, the adoption of the Durango Mesa area plan update, and that's by resolution. The adoption of the Durango Mesa Park preliminary plat, also by resolution, and the transferring of the fee titled land, and that's by ordinance. The Durango Mesa area plan was approved by the Community Development Commission in, previously, it was last year, or no, I'm sorry, it was February of this year. And then the, also, the Community Development Commission on April 22nd approved the Durango Mesa preliminary plat. Both of those were unanimous votes. So I have three different resolutions for you. They're all listed, and we can start with those. I don't know if you want, you want to start with this one, leave this one up, or you want to?
No, we're gonna, yeah, so we'll need a motion to open up the public hearing first, and then I'll have these come back up when we're ready for motions.
I move to open a public hearing for the Durango Mesa area plan update, Durango Mesa Park preliminary plat, and transfer of fee titled trails.
Second.
Council discussion?
Actually, oh, sorry. I just had a question. The, sorry, I had to make you work on your last meeting a little bit.
You have a question on the public hearing?
Oh, about the public hearing?
Yeah, this was just about the public hearing. We'll ask her questions.
No, I don't.
Have council discussion. I just made sure. Okay, perfect. Just hang on. Vote.
Yes, Counselor Bossman, sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tam Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing?
And no one had signed up for this public hearing.
Okay. Should I, okay, I will close the public hearing. Can I get a reading of, do I need a reading of each one? Yeah. Okay, can I get a reading of 10.3.1?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10.3.1. Well, that was the public hearing we just did. So 3.2, right? 10.3.2?
10.3.2.
Okay, yep. So 10.3.2 is a resolution approving the updated Durango Mesa area plan submitted by Community Development.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Council discussion.
Yes. I was curious, Vicki, what about easements for future or planned future trails? Will those easements possibly come as those trails are built, or will those just go to the foundation?
Correct. Future trails will get easements on those also, unless they're on city properties. And so some of the property will be given to the city at different times, so then they wouldn't need an easement, but otherwise we'll get easements.
Okay. And then more curiosity than anything else, did the traffic study show that there is a stoplight needed at the Highway 3 Uwe Mesa interchange right there, that T?
It definitely took that into account. I forgot to mention that. It did take that into account. And so it will, they will work together, the two lights, once they have one for Durango Mesa, which isn't needed for a while.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
I, first, what a great project, and I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this, especially you, Vicki, also for your 30 years. And this is a nice way to wrap up your public presence, even though it's just a starting point. But I'm glad to see we updated the Durango Mesa area plan. The preliminary plat seems, cleans up many issues along with the land transfers and trail easements. I reviewed the document, and I, the updates on the trails, emergency services, access, et cetera, but also the disc golf course, I know it's very popular in some areas, so I think it's great. And of course, progress and plans for the Phase 2 implementation. I have two questions for you. One is, when I'm European, I like roundabouts when it's fitting. And this would be like, man, you have so much space. Why did the roundabout not work?
Actually, I can't answer that. I don't know the specifics, but it didn't fit the way it needed to. So there might have been some other reasons, and someone else might be able to answer that in more detail.
Is there anybody who would know? Because I know in junction, malfunction junction, we're cramming in, or was a discussion. And here we have open space, and we can't even get around.
Hi, I'm Maura Montrose Compton. I'm the Executive Director of Durango Mesa Park Foundation. I will answer that for you. The reason that it went from a roundabout in the plan in 2018 to an updated version of a phase signalization on Highway 3 with this update in 2024 is because of the long-term look at how the park was going to be used for events. And so a roundabout will not work with coordinating with the other lights on the north end of Highway 3 and on the south end of Highway 3, and as well down Larry Velda's way down to the highway. So that was the reason for this phase signalization, was really a long-term look at large events that then would be able to have synchronization with the lights.
Interesting. That's a very clear answer. Another question, that's probably for you as well. In the, in the report, it says there's an 18-inch water line. Is that primarily for firefighting purposes as well as water supply, or?
Actually, that's part of our water master plan and for the beginning of redundancy to Grandview.
Okay.
So it would be upsized by the city.
Yeah. And then a lot of times, we see projects take place, and then 10 years down the line, it's like, oh, we should have done something else, because now we have to do a whole new project. And I was looking at irrigation, and I know there's wells there. And I was just wondering, if you put in an 18-inch water line, is there any intention or was there any discussion on putting a raw water line in there to connect the river? And is that worthwhile?
We did discuss that a few times. Really, cost, I think, is the biggest reason why we, it's not part of the plan at this time. That might change in the future. But there, the wells will continue to function and probably be used for irrigation on the Mesa and for, you know, also keeping the trails damp and all the things we have to do, so.
Because the cost to add one line during construction for the water line isn't insignificant compared to 10 years from now. And we see it with Lake Nighthorse. If they would run two lines down the hill, we would have been in really good shape. And now we're talking $20 million.
So there's a couple of different issues there. We had very lengthy conversations when the county was involved with the project. And that involved the fact that the county actually has a lot of water rights that they currently don't use at the existing fairgrounds that could have been used up on the Mesa. But there, there are restrictions with that, and where it comes out was actually, this is how deep we got into the conversation. There are certain locations where it would need to be extracted. It does work with where the location is, but it was an additional added expense that groups were not prepared to jump on board with.
And the city has extra water rights too, I think, for raw water. But you discussed it, and I just wanted to bring it forward. Obviously, you addressed it.
I appreciate your question.
Thank you.
Counselor Youssef, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you for all your hard work on this. And I've been told by both Maura and Gage how instrumental you have been on the city's behalf in working on this project. And so just this project alone, you know, thank you for all your years of service in working with the city. And I know we have two more to get through, but just wanted to throw that out there. All right. Can we have a vote?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tam Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a reading of 10.3.3?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10.3.3 is a resolution approving the proposed Durango Mesa Park preliminary plat submitted by Community Development.
Do I have a motion?
I move for a resolution approving the Durango, the proposed Durango Mesa Park preliminary plat.
Second.
Council discussion. Okay, vote.
Mayor Pro Tam Yasi? Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes. And then can I have a reading of 10.3.4?
Thank you. 10.3.4 is first reading of an ordinance approving the transfer of the Durango Mesa fee titled trails to the Durango Mesa Park Foundation in exchange for easements submitted by Community Development.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Council discussion? All right, can I have a vote?
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tam Yasi?
Yes.
And Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving right along. Number, item number 11 resolutions, consideration of adoption. Can I have a reading of 11.1?
And, uh, Mayor, there was actually an individual who had wished to speak under public, uh, participation on agenda items. And they wanted to speak about agenda item 11. Um, and if, if you see fit, we could let them speak.
There was a technical difficulty in trying to get it to sign up for.
Can I, just, should I just allow the one or should I open a public comment section? After the motion? Okay. Um, do I have a motion?
Uh, move for a resolution to adopt this.
There's a staff presentation.
There is a staff.
Sorry.
Would you like that to go first?
Staff presentation, then public comment, and then a motion. Not now. Okay, staff presentation.
Yes, there, uh, is Mayor and Councilwoman Tommy Crosby is working, uh, making his way up. I just wanted to introduce a little bit uh, on this item. As some of you would know, uh, probably maybe almost a year ago was approached, uh, by a business that was looking to uh, come into the, the city, uh, of Durango, was a, a local regional business, was looking at ways to maybe make it pencil out for a use that we saw was very necessary for the community. Uh, economic development being something I had some experience in, uh, was able to talk about some areas and ways that we could do it. However, before actually going through economic development incentives with businesses, we thought it was a good idea to develop a policy, uh, so that we're within line and understanding of when we would look at using opportunities and had an opportunity to work, uh, with Tommy, kind of gave just a brief outline of here's what I was thinking. And he's done an amazing job in putting this together, uh, and working with the business community. And I think we're, have something really special here with this policy that's looking to be replicated by other uh, communities in the, uh, in the region. So just to thank you to Tommy for your, your work and, and taking on that challenge and, uh, I'll pass it on to you.
Very much. Uh, Tommy Crosby, Economic Opportunity Manager. Uh, I'm here tonight to discuss the city's proposed economic development incentive policy. Before I dig in, I think it's timely. Uh, if you were not aware, the state of Colorado is celebrating the 2024 Economic Development Week. So just, you know, serendipitous. Um, so tonight, uh, we would be proposing a resolution to adopt the city of Durango's economic development incentive policy. I want to highlight the clear strategic plan alignment with our affordability and economic opportunity strategic goal. Um, the part of this economic incentive policy is really to act as an economic catalyst to encourage new businesses as well as, um, opportunities for business expansion. Um, and then, uh, as you will hear, there's some clear ties to supporting economic vitality, um, advancement opportunities woven into the fabric of this policy. Um, so hopefully after reviewing the policy in your packet, you were able to clearly see these three themes that we really tried to make apparent, um, throughout this policy. We, we, we want this to be a tool uh, in the quiver of Durango's, uh, economic development, um, uh, sustainable community growth. Um, we don't want this to be, you know, the end all be all, this will be a selective tool used judiciously, but we really want this to tie into these three themes deeply. Um, like I mentioned, and I just want to preface my presentation that this tool will be used very judiciously, selectively, and by exception. Consideration will be done on a case-by-case basis. Um, its use will be discretionary, not by right. Um, I would not equate this with some of the sys, the city's existing grant programs that are, uh, encouraged for all businesses to plot, to apply. Um, this is, this is not a one-size-fits-all. This will be used very selectively, um, and again, by exception. So I just want to preface, uh, this economic development incentive, incentive on that note. Um, and a, as Jose mentioned, um, I, I really want to give a shout, a shout out to, um, our feedback and review partners, Scape, Region Nine, Fort Lewis College, the Durango Chamber, um, the city's legal and finance departments, uh, the La Plata Economic Development Alliance. They were crucial in making sure that this policy is a good fit for Durango. Um, and it isn't just a cooker, a cookie cutter policy taken from out of state or another part of Colorado, but really tailor making this to our community. Um, and then, uh, on a similar note, I want to, uh, let you know that we are not in fact reinventing the wheel. This, this type of policy exists in other communities across the state. There's some really great ones out there. I highlighted, I highlighted a few, um, on this slide. Um, but it, it is, it, it's a tool that a lot of other communities use as a bridge, a public-private bridge, um, to bring in essential services, um, to foster the local business growth, um, when appropriate. So I'm going to start digging into the six key focus areas that are outlined in this policy. Um, so first and foremost, this is a market-led economic catalyst. Um, we want to be able to use this economic incentive when market forces are not delivering on their own. Um, so as Jose mentioned, we, we realized, you know, maybe a blind spot is when we have an essential community service that's needed in a strategic growth area. We want to be able to have a pathway, um, to bridge any gaps that might exist, um, that market forces are not delivering on their own. So this incentive policy would be a tool, again, to help bridge that gap to make sure that our community has all of the essential services and businesses needed for our community to thrive. Uh, as you are well aware, living in Durango, we have a fantastic startup and entrepreneur culture in the city. Um, one big area of opportunity that this incentive policy looks to address is when those great startups and entrepreneurs, wh- when their business gets some legs and they want to start growing, how can we help them stay in Durango and keep those jobs retained locally? Instead of those businesses needing to look elsewhere, maybe the Front Range, Arizona, Texas. How can we keep those businesses here and as a city be able to incentivize their growth locally? Um, we, we want this policy to make sense for both our business environment, but our community as well. We want to make sure that we're targeting the right types of businesses. We want to make sure that we're, we're fostering appropriate strategic growth. Um, and we want to make sure that any businesses that we're growing through an economic development incentive policy, um, are enhancing our sense of community resilience. This, uh, uh, this package of economic development incentives is not going to be a one-size-fits-all. There's going to be a, a diverse range of incentives that we're able to offer as a city. Our biggest tool will likely be the leveraging of sales tax. How might we be able to, uh, reimburse sales tax on a perfor, a performance-based schedule or maybe provide a sales tax holiday, a holiday for the right business opportunity for either growth, relocation, expansion. Um, other incentives might look like, uh, infrastructure, uh, partnership. How might we be able to target a city's capital improvement project to time with the development of a business in a strategic growth area to help reduce some of those costly burdens that can, that can come with infra, infrastructure expansion and installation. Um, and then, uh, utilizing our, our network with community partners to, uh, you know, provide letters of support for grants, to be able to be fiscal sponsors for grants, things of that nature. Um, we really want to provide as many different pathways as possible, um, within this economic development incentive policy. And then addressing localized needs, as I've been saying, we want to make sure, um, that any businesses that we are incentivizing makes sense for our Durango community, whether that's a grocery store in a strategic growth area, a healthcare center, a treatment center, a transportation hub, things that really are tied, again, to that resiliency and that sense of how do we create a thriving community, not just for our businesses, but for our residents as well. And then lastly, but just as important, um, this is going to be a performance-based policy. So, um, to reduce the, uh, risk on, uh, public finances, um, incentives would not be awarded or provided until certain performance-based metrics are met. That might look like, uh, job, uh, number of jobs generated, revenue generated, uh, a clear public benefit has been met. The childcare center was built, the park, the trail connection was made, whatever we've outlined in that incentive agreement. Um, that would not be unlocked or provided until that was clearly, uh, met in a, in a, in a clear data-driven way. So those are kind of the, the C, the six key focus areas, um, that provide the structure for this policy. Um, our qualifying criteria, um, is what we, we try to use as our standard of if, if a business is eligible for our uh, economic development incentive policy. A business would need to meet the majority of these criteria in order to even begin qualifying for a conversation of, um, entering into an incentive, incentive agreement. A few that I want to call out here, job creation or retention, again, focusing on, uh, creation for maybe those new businesses that might be coming into town and retention for businesses that are looking to grow or expand locally. There'd be 10 new jobs or either six retained jobs that otherwise would have left Durango. For our wage standard, uh, wages provided would need to be, um, at or above 100% of area median income. And then we're using rev, revenue gen, revenue generation as another qualifying criteria, a minimum of $500,000 in annual, annual revenue generated. Um, the more criteria that a business is able to meet at a larger scale, the more likelihood that they would have a more preferable, um, incentive agreement between the city and their business. So how would this process work? Just like any other project, you know, we'd have a, a staff consultation or a pre-application meeting to make sure that their project has a path forward in Durango, making sure that, you know, we're not sending them down a rabbit hole. Um, if their project isn't going to work out, that would involve community development, public works, engineering, DFPD. Really wanted to make sure that this project has a path forward. Um, after that, we would want to make sure that the project met, again, the majority of those qualifying criteria that I outlined on that previous slide. Um, if those steps are done successfully, they would be invited to make a formal submission. That submission would be reviewed and then we would convene our community development department, legal, finance, and the city manager's office to start negotiating the terms of an incentive agreement. That proposed agreement would be brought to an ev, an evaluation panel, which I'll detail on my next slide. That evaluation panel will be able to, um, review, score using the expertise of, um, some of our subject matter experts in our community. And then that would be handed off to the city manager for review. And then it would be at the discretion of the city manager, um, pending, uh, the panel's review and city manager review, if they would like to bring that to council for final review and potential decision on whether an incentive agreement should be entered into or not. So the evaluation panel that I mentioned, this would involve, uh, the city manager or a designee, a member of the Community Development Commission, a member from Region Nine Economic Development District, um, a member of the La Plata Economic Development Alliance, and then a member from Fort Lewis College. So at this point, I really hope that you're able to see, um, how these three areas, growth, resilience, opportunity are woven into the fabric of this policy. Um, I also hope that you're, that you have a clear understanding that this is not um, a tool that we're going to be, um, using, um, like some of our other grant programs, like I mentioned. This, this would be very selectively used and applied, um, in a way that ensures we have a pathway forward for when those, those decisions, uh, those, when those decisions come to, uh, be able to continue to provide our community with essential services, um, essential growth opportunities, maintaining great local jobs. Um, we find that this to be one of the potential tools to help us, um, continue to enhance, um, our, uh, it's, it's, uh, one of our tools to continue to empower growth, foster resilience, and catalyze opportunity. Um, at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have about the economic development incentive policy.
Before council discussion, I'm going to move to open public comments for this item.
Second.
Council discussion on public comment. All right, vote.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Excellent.
And, uh, the individual's name was Lo, is, uh, Laura Louis Marchino.
Perfect. You have three minutes. I don't know. Just like public comment. Okay, great.
Thank you. Um, my name's Laura Louis Marchino. I live at 3110 Quasar Street in Durango. Um, and I serve as the executive director of Region Nine Economic Development District. And I'm sorry that I didn't get officially on the item 11 of the agenda, but I wanted to provide comment on both this economic development incentive policy as well as the next item, which is the Rural Jump Start. Um, first in regards to the economic incentive policy, um, I did have the pleasure of reviewing and providing input on what is in front of you today. And Durango's not alone in having a policy, as Tommy mentioned, that can support business opportunities that may fill a gap, a priority, or a community need. And really, since every community has a different focus, a different feel, a different niche, um, this p, policy definitely provides flexibility, I think, to adapt to the changing circumstances, but also leverages Durango's specific assets. Um, Durango's also at the regional table in terms of economic development and these efforts are being communicated and coordinated with various partners, such as the Alliance, as Tommy mentioned as well. But I do encourage council to pass this resolution. Um, and I'd also like to encourage support of the Rural Jump Start Initiative, which is also in section 11 of the agenda. Um, La Plata County was recently eligible for the state incentive and they, um, passed a resolution at the end of March to participate. The town of Ignacio is also submitted and passed a resolution very similar to what you're looking at today for Durango. And with Durango really being the center of our region's employment opportunities and kind of that business ecosystem, um, especially with all of the partners such as Scape and the Small Business Development Center, we really think that this incentive will be able to help significantly the unique startup, um, businesses that look to export a product or service outside the community. It's a very narrow focus. Um, and this state-led incentive also dovetails nicely into the economic development policy by giving you one more tool. So thank you for letting me provide public comment.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay. Do I have a motion? Or do I have to close public comment? I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion? I know, I, well, I did anyways.
Uh, uh, I move, uh, to, for a resolution to adopt the city of Durango's economic development incentive policy.
Second.
Excellent. Council discussion.
Um, I think this is timely and, uh, overdue. Um, and I can see how much work was put into this. So great job by, by Tommy and, and the team. Um, you know, this creates a lot of intention around community needs that the free market is not satisfying. And I'm excited to see how we can leverage, um, this program to really incentivize key, um, areas of growth that we want to see, um, uh, meet our, our community needs. So excellent work, um, getting this crafted. And I look forward to seeing how, uh, this goes from here. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, are there, is there a cap on any sort of incentive, uh, that's coming in? Or, you know, from a, from a tax incentive or infrastructure support or technical assistance out there? Is there like a, a certain like max amount that somebody could apply for?
We, we haven't limited, um, we've, we've tried to keep it, uh, relatively open, ma, recognizing that, um, we don't necessarily have control of some of the projects that might come to the table. Um, they're going to vary in size. We might have the ability to support someone that just barely qualifies versus someone who overwhelmingly qualifies. Um, but we haven't yet figured out what is that sweet spot. I do imagine there will be some, um, uh, some trial and error of what is the best fit? What is the best way to utilize this policy? Um, trying to find some trends, um, in what type of businesses are interested, um, and what kind of, uh, essential service areas are um, needing the most amount of support at what dollar amount. So we're hoping that this will, uh, by just opening the door, we'll get some of those answers, um, of recognizing what gaps exist that might currently be, be blind spots.
Awesome. And will there be somebody kind of help, like, he'd use the word handholding, but like helping businesses know what to apply and ask for? This is kind of a new program, you know, will they kind of know like, oh, I need X amount towards tax rebates or I need this sort of infrastructure improvement? Like, are, will there be somebody to kind of help guide them through this process?
Yeah, the great part about a program like this is all those community partners that I highlighted. Durango has such a fantastic, um, support system for businesses along every stage of whether they're just starting up or they're looking to scale. Um, I think that we would leverage those existing relationships to try to connect them with the subject matter experts who are best attuned to, um, light industrial growth versus, um, heavy manufacturing versus, uh, community services like childcare or healthcare. We would make sure that we're using the best subject matter experts available locally, regionally, and statewide to provide those answers rather than just saying, all right, give us what you got. Uh, we, we hope it's the right fit.
Sure. To add on that, if I can, uh, you know, definitely one of the parts of the restructuring that we did in the organization was for me to get a little more involved in economic development. And I've had, uh, those conversations with Mike French and, uh, discussing what are the businesses out there, uh, the businesses' needs that are there. So this will be a proactive approach on different levels, uh, just to let people know that we have this incentive, uh, policy and ability available. And, uh, being able to meet with those businesses one-on-one to find out what their specific needs will be because I- because I would imagine they're going to vary across industry. Well, this is awesome. Like, I'm super, super excited about seeing where this goes and how it dovetails in our overall economic opportunities in the community. So great work. Thank you.
Melissa, do you have anything?
I'm just, I'm, I too, you know, I kind of echo what Councillor Woodruff is suggesting is I'm really, really happy to see us taking this, these proactive steps forward regarding economic development, trying to attract businesses and do more to do that. I think that, you know, in the past, we haven't taken quite such an active role. I think this is a great step in the right direction. I'm sure we're going to learn a lot in the process. And I just really appreciate staff's efforts. I hope it's, I hope it's fruitful. I hope we can reach out to our partners actively like you're suggesting and, and really try to make everyone aware that we are doing this and we are offering these incentives so that, you know, we can do our part to try to stimulate some of that business economic growth. I really, I love to see us taking an active proactive role. So thank you all for your efforts.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Tonight is quite the community development show. And all I'll say is that I couldn't be prouder to have you, Tommy, and Eva and the entire community development staff on our team for the city of Durango, your guys' creativity and just like willingness to work your butts off for what we are really wanting in economic development. One of them, housing, obviously is one of them. I'm looking forward to the positive impacts that this policy will have in our community. I think it is overdue and I think it's, it's great. So thank you so much for your hard work. Roll call.
Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yaasi.
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
And Councillor Bossmans.
Yes.
All right, moving along, 11.2. Can I have a reading of 11.2, please?
Thank you. Item 11.2 is a resolution of the City of Durango authorizing participation in the Rural Jump Start, Jump Start Zone Program submitted by Community Development.
Wait for our slides to get caught up. Great. Again, Tommy Crosby, Economic Opportunity Manager. I'm here to present on the Rural Jump Start Zone Program. Tonight's action would hopefully be a resolution of the City of Durango authorizing participation in the Rural Jump Start Zone Program. Just as my last agenda item had, there's clear strategic plan alignment with the affordability and economic opportunity area. Again, acting as an economic catalyst to encourage new business and business expansion by providing innovative opportunities for growth and then supporting economic vitality and advancement opportunities. So the Rural Jump Start Zone Program is really rural-specific. How can we boost economic growth in rural areas? How can we provide significant tax relief for new and relocating businesses? And then the part of this program that I really appreciate is its focus on strengthening local economies through specifically job creation. So for a business to be eligible for the Rural Jump Start Zone Program, they need to either be a startup business or a business that is relocating to Colorado from out of state. They must offer a non-duplicative business product or service in the region. And then they must have a local liaison, such as Region Nine or Fort Lewis College, to be their applicant partner. And then the benefits for Durango. So this would help us attract new, new business growth with appealing tax incentives, allow businesses access to state grants up to $40,000. And then, again, focusing on that job growth, companies would be required to create five, at least five jobs at or above the county area median income. So the steps to participate. This is a partnership between the state, counties, municipalities, and businesses. For a municipality to participate, the county that it sits in must have passed a resolution to opt into the program. La Plata County signed a resolution in March 2024 to participate in the Rural Jump Start Zone Program. And that's what I'm doing here. That's what I am here tonight doing is inviting the City of Durango to pass a resolution to opt in to participate in the Rural Jump Start Zone Program. So what would the city's commitment to this program look like? The city, the city's participation would look like a waiving of business personal property tax for four years. This is specifically tied to use tax. On average, that looks like about $3,300 per business. And we imagine that maybe one to three businesses in Durango would likely be eligible for this program each year with a fiscal impact of about $10,000 a year on the city of Durango. And thanks to our finance team for, and our planning services team to help us get to that, get to that number. And then lastly, just needing to make sure we have a good strategic partnership with Region Nine and FLC for program support, which I'm, I'm happy to say we have. If there's any questions on the Rural Jump Start Zone Program, I'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Sorry. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R 2024 XXXX to approve the city Durango participation in the Rural Jump Start Zone Program.
Second.
Excellent. Council discussion.
Tommy, I was wondering, what is a partnership with Fort Lewis or the Region Nine? What does that consist of?
So being a state, county, and municipal program, they, they target kind of strategic rural partners to make sure that these businesses that are starting up relocating are able to meet all of those program guidelines. They act as kind of a, a program, a local program liaison based on what region of the state you exist in. And for our county, that has been identified as both Region Nine and Fort Lewis College. We're lucky to have a really active Region Nine Economic Development District of Southwest Colorado that has taken a really proactive approach to inviting various counties and municipalities into this program and letting them know that they are more than willing to help guide eligible businesses through that application process.
Anyone else? All right, vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Yaasi.
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Councillor Youssef.
Yep, yes.
Councillor Bossmans.
Yes.
And Mayor Buell.
Yes. Okay, do you want to jump in?
Just since it seems to have been comdev night tonight, just want to let you guys know that we in the legal department judge our success on how little we say at these meetings. And Jim Martin is with us tonight, and he is primarily servicing comdev. He's done a ton of work behind the scenes with those guys, and he has not had, has not had to say a word tonight. So, win for legal. Thank you, Jim.
Nice work, Jim. All right, we have nothing under item 12. Item 13, public comment on non-agenda items. Before we start here, I'd like to make a motion to approve any one that's speaking on public comment under this section, if they need translation services to have six minutes time versus just three.
Second.
Discussion. Can we have a vote?
Councillor Woodruff.
Yes.
Mayor Buell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yaasi.
Yes.
Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
And Councillor Bossmans.
Yes.
Excellent. Can we play the public comment rules? Or whatever.
Public comment is encouraged on specific items published on tonight's agenda. These items will be announced by the mayor. Public comments on non-agenda items come later in the meeting.
Um, that's the wrong announcement.
You must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name.
Okay, can we call our first?
Thank you, Mayor. The first individual wishing to speak under item 13 is Tiffany Chacon.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Chacon, and I am a Durango native. I've lived here my whole entire life, and I now have my own kiddos here as well. And I am not technically a City of Durango resident. I live out there by the airport. But I am a worker for the City of Durango, specifically with La Plata Food Equity Coalition and the childcare work that we're focused on. And I thank you again for coming here. I thank you for voting to allow that extra time for interpretation tonight. That's beautiful, and that really supports that you want to hear from our community. So thank you for doing that. And I also come to you wearing multiple different hats. I'm a mother. I've been an early childhood educator, and I've also been a program director. And they all converge on one critical issue that we're going to talk about today, which is childcare in Durango. As a mother of twins, I was very fortunate to have family here. The fact that my kids did not need childcare until they were two years old is a blessing, and I cannot imagine what I would have done if we didn't have childcare. We never would have wanted to leave here, but that might have been what was caused. At two, my twins were not able to be maintained by their grandparents, and so they needed childcare. However, I couldn't find childcare. I was an early childcare teacher at that time, and my director told me my children could come. They would take the cost of tuition out of my pay, and I would have to pay $500. So I would take nothing home. I would pay money. I get it. I have twins. That's an extra one, right? But still, as a teacher, that doesn't make sense. I then was fortunate enough to be able to move into a director position where I did have better pay, but I still was struggling with care for my children and struggling to, to operate a childcare business. Most of our childcare businesses are barely breaking even, if not operating, operating in the red. Their teachers are making $14 an hour, and as a director, I personally had to go and get food bags for my teachers because they were going home without anything to eat. So I come to you today to bring all of this together to talk about the fact that we need affordable, accessible, and inclusive care. So for the past year, I've been working with the Grupo de Cuidado Infantil. Many of them are here today, along with other members of our community, and they've been fighting for accessible childcare since 2020, specifically for children zero to four years old. We love UPK. That's great that we have that exception, but there's that huge group of infants and toddlers that are missing their care. Right now, we know that 12% increase is what we're seeing for children zero to six years old. And as you guys all stated, we're touching on the theme of economic development today, right? Those youth, those families, that's a huge part of our economy, and childcare affects every single person. I had a sweet bird give me a song earlier that the City of Durango might be looking to have childcare on the updated strategic plan. That's exciting. That's wonderful, and I really want to propose that the city does push for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next individual who signed up to speak is Trevor Byrd.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors, city staff. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity for some public comment. My name's Trevor Byrd. I'm a resident of La Plata County, but I own and operate three businesses based here in Durango City Limits. I'm very proud that they gainfully employ about 30 people, as well as a local nonprofit that's based here in Durango. Tonight, I wanted to just bring you guys up to speed a little bit on the Labor Day weekend events that we have planned to take place. I saw Mr. Shine in the back. I wanted to really commend Scott and his team for the excellent customer service that they've been providing as we've been working with them. We've also been working with Marty Poole. We have a sustainability manager in Durango, and that's really cool. And so we're working with Marty on a sustainability plan for the events over Labor Day weekend. And we also partnered with a, it sounds kind of crazy, but Liquid Death. They're a water company that manufactures water and aluminum cans. So we're really proud this year. We will have no plastic water bottles being sold or distributed here in Durango during Labor Day weekend. We've also had the opportunity to connect with Chief Current, and we are working on creating some fun, but very direct public service announcements about the rules of the road. We want to invite people to come to our city, but we also want to make sure that they understand the rules and that they respect them and that they understand the consequences when they don't respect them. We are already in the process of coordinating inter-agency public safety meetings. That includes the state, the sheriff's office, local PD, and other law enforcement agencies. We've planned out several meetings leading up to Labor Day to make sure that public safety remains our top priority for the weekend. And our tickets went on sale on April 26, and we have seen a great response from people purchasing tickets to, to come into town and celebrate with this Labor Day. One thing I really appreciate is how the City of Durango promotes diversity and inclusion, and especially protection for minorities from discrimination. The motorcycle community in general is a very diverse group of people, and our event is not only incredibly diverse, but it also spans a multi-generational span, which is really neat when you see grandparents to the grandkids and everyone in between coming out to enjoy some of these events. I don't know if you guys know this, but less than 3% of the population rides motorcycles. That makes us a minority. While maybe 1% of all riders could be considered problematic, I don't believe that justifies that the entire minority group should be discriminated against. And so I just wanted to thank you guys, and please keep up the good work on protecting minorities. Speaking of inclusion, we are really excited to be working with the Southern Indian Tribe again and an organization called Native Love to host the second annual Missing Murdered Indigenous Relative Ride. Last year, we had about 150 people, including the CEO of Harley Davidson Motor Company that joined us. And we would like to formally invite a representative from council to join us that Sunday morning at the La Plata County Fairgrounds to celebrate that ride. And also, we'd like to invite a representative from council to come out Saturday night to the flat track races and welcome the thousands of people that are coming into town to enjoy it. So thank you for your time.
Okay, next.
And the next individual is Enrique Orozco, and indicated that he's online.
I'm not seeing an Enrique on my list here.
And Mayor, if you, if it's appropriate, we can go the next person?
Yeah.
The next person is Beatriz Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Olivia De Pablo Lopez, and I am here to do interpretation for those who need, which is the case right now. I also wanted to make a quick statement on language justice. I want to extend my, my gratitude to the City of Durango for opening up spaces to be able to speak the language of our heart. Estoy aquí para hacer interpretación. Soy Olivia De Pablo. Soy la coordinadora de justicia al lenguaje. A través de la Plata Food Equity Coalition, y voy a dar interpretación. Muchas gracias a la ciudad por permitirnos hablar el idioma del corazón.
Estimados consejeros de la Ciudad de Durango, soy Beatriz García y resido en 24 Lowes Mountain. Gracias por el espacio, por expresar la importancia del cuidado infantil en la Ciudad de Durango y porque hoy ya estoy aquí representando a una mujer que no pudo... y porque hoy ya estoy aquí representando a una mujer que no pudo estar presente, que es mi amiga, que es madre, hija, y comparto su historia. Y aunque no está aquí presente, hablaré como si ella estuviera aquí.
Dear councilors of the City of Durango, I am Beatriz García, and I reside at Twenty-Four Lewis Mountain line. Thank you for this place to express the importance of childcare in our city today. I am here to share a story and representing a woman, friend, mother, and daughter that was not able to be here with us today, and that's why I'm now going to share her story.
Someone will be speaking in here, like being present here. Mi nombre es Mayra Gallardo, y he vivido en Durango, Colorado, por ocho años. En abril del 2022 nació mi segunda hija Jade. Estuve buscando una guardería, aplicando en varios lugares, buscando a quien cuidara a mi bebé, pero todo estaba lleno. Solo me dejaban en espera las mujeres que cuidaban los niños, desde casa también. Estaba todo saturado. En ocasiones era muy costoso. Estaba pasando por una depresión postparto, y con la tensión y angustia no pude encontrar quién cuidara de mi bebé, y vi la necesidad de ir a trabajar con ella.
My name is Mayra Gallardo. She's basically speaking, and we have somebody else. My name is Mayra Gallardo, and I lived in Durango, Colorado for eight years. In April twenty-two, my second daughter Jade was born, and I was looking for a daycare, applying in several places, looking for someone to take care of my baby. But everything was full, and only woman left me waiting. Only woman left me waiting who took care of children from home, where also satyr, or sometimes it was very expensive.
Mi trabajo es limpiar casas, y la mayoría de ellas fueron muy amables al dejar llevar a mi bebé. Pero era difícil tener que preparar todo lo necesario para tener mi bebé en casa, y llevaba todo de artículos, y fue un año muy difícil. Físico, emocional, y mental, con gran frustración, que no pude encontrar otro digno lugar y adecuado para cuidar a mi bebé.
I work as a house cleaner. Most of my clients were very kind to me, to let me bring my baby while I was working. At the same time, it was difficult having to prepare everything necessary to have my baby in each house. I carry all kinds of items, and it was a very difficult year for me. I was tired, physically and emotionally and mentally.
Es de emergencia que se le brinda y se ponga acción a darle prioridad al cuidado infantil. El de dar instalaciones con gente capacitada y preparada para recibir a tantos bebés en espera. Madres preocupadas y frustradas esperando un espacio digno para todos nuestros bebés. Así que levanto mi voz en nombre de todos esos niños y madres que están en espera de un lugar.
It is urgent that action is provided and action is taken to give priority to childcare, to make more facilities and people trained and prepared to receive so many waiting babies and worrying frustrated mothers waiting for a decent space for our babies. So I raised my voice today on behalf of all those children and mothers who are waiting for a place in the childcare industry.
Hagamos un cambio y mejoremos el cuidado digno infantil de cero a cuatro años, y esperamos que estas historias sean consideradas para la prioridad del Plan Estratégico de la Ciudad de Durango.
It is our hope that we can make a change and improve this in childcare for children from zero to four years old. And it is also our hope that you can include this as a priority of the City of Durango for your next strategic planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next individual is Darlene Holland.
Hi, I'm Darlene Holland, and I'm a resident, actually bought Vicky's place, so we've been there now ten plus years. Anyway, I'm here, and I just, this has been so exciting. It's my first time here, and thank you for everything that you guys are doing. Yeah, childcare, there's a need, whatever race, like the statistics that I understand, and you can ask me later how I got them, but there's like three thousand children under the age of four. There's, I believe, like twelve hundred spots available, okay? I'm going to read from two moms who couldn't be here. One's Kara C. She's a Caucasian woman, if it matters. I applied everywhere in town when I was six weeks pregnant. I got into Mercy Childcare in January, so ten months after applying. I think the reason I got in was I emailed them monthly, and I'm an employee. I just got an email from River House yesterday saying that there's a spot for Owen, fourteen months after I applied. It's definitely an issue. I still have friends on the waiting list, and their kids are now nine and ten months old. Another lady, she happens to be Caucasian, Brooke S., both of the boys are at River House. We were on the waitlist there for a year before we got in with Gus, and we were lucky to get in with George because they thankfully prioritize siblings. I have a lot of friends who have struggled to find childcare for their babies and toddlers. There is definitely, sorry, I see the clock. There is this underlying pressure competition for parents of young kiddos to get on waitlists everywhere across Durango. Several waitlists that we were on when we first moved here three years ago. Gus was number eighteen at one and forty-two at another. I also heavily volunteer at my kid, I have two kids, one at Riverview, one at Mountain, and very connected with the PTO Vice President at Riverview for the last three years. So hearing from the kindergarten or teachers too, they are seeing the gap, whether it's because of COVID or perhaps, you know, parents are logging in more with their kids on the iPad. There is this inability to sit in your chair, line up. So the quality care for social-emotional learning, which precedes academic learning, it's our future of Durango, right? It's our educational systems. I know maybe many of you don't have children or have children that are maybe grown or gone, but it's real. It affects our whole community. I'm so excited to hear all the things that are going on today. And when Vicky and Tommy were speaking, I was hearing, let's see if I wrote them down. It was like, it's, one of them said, oh, I erased it. But basically, community needs, right? Business-wise too, hello, childcare center. I mean, it's a shoo-in, in my opinion. My time is pretty much up. I appreciate everybody here. And public speaking is not my forte, but I hope you picked up on what I'm trying to say. And hello, pickleball court. I love pickleball. My husband, but like how we allocate our money, hello. We have to like, I don't know how you guys all do it, but can we think about this? Okay.
Thank you. Next.
The next individual is Heather Harland.
The cute baby.
Hi, I'm Heather Holland. I am a Durango resident. I am the mother of two children. I have a son who will turn four this fall, and then I also have this tiny little infant who is one month old. I am here for early care and education workforce. One of the issues in our local community is we have five childcare centers that actually offer spots to infants. So there's a very low number, and the number of available spots could actually be increased if we're able to actually offer competitive pay and be able to bring in more people to the workforce. We have the capacity at multiple childcare centers to have additional students, but there is not the ability to actually fully staff the childcare facilities. So that is definitely a huge problem that we are currently experiencing. Also, just hours that facilities are open. So a lot of the care facilities that you can have your children in are closed for zero to four-year-olds very early in the day. So when you're looking at a childcare facility, if you can even get a spot, or when you can get a spot, we were here in the community, I think, ten months when we were able to get our son into Mercy Childcare at six weeks pregnant. The first people that knew I was pregnant were childcare facilities. I did not tell families. I did not tell friends until I was twelve weeks. I was on every waitlist in town at six weeks. So there's just the need to really be able to try to find care and have care that are ours for people that work full-time. My husband and I are both working full-time, and so we need the ability to have that care during full business hours from eight to five. Also, being able to ideally get both of your children into the same facility. So we are lucky that we are prioritized at Mercy to be able to try to have our infant there. I am to go back to work next month, and I still do not know if I have a spot there. I know I am on the waitlist other places and do not have a spot. They say they'll contact you once they have something available. That really only leaves opportunities for a nanny, which is very expensive, or trying to do a nanny share. Our house really isn't conducive to that because it's an open floor plan, and we have two people working from home. Lastly, I would like to go through affordability. I think, as we mentioned, there's a statistic that La Plata County families pay an average of 29% of their income on childcare expenses. And this stat was based around, a family of two children spends around $21,500 annually, or $1,800 a month. If we are able to get our infant into the Mercy Childcare Center, we will be paying almost $3,000 per month, and that is about $36,000 annually. So as you can see, that is really inaccessible for many families. There are some state initiatives that are launched, including UPK, and, oh, it ends up, so I'm just going to wrap up real quick.
Okay.
Awesome. UPK, so I would really appreciate if Durango Nine R School District would consider updating their kinder gear from nine-one to ten-one, which would open up access to kids that are bilingual or dual-language for three-year-olds, and then it would also open up additional spots for four-year-olds who are born in fall.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor, would you mind if I asked maybe a very short question to clarify something?
That's fine. Heather?
Heather, can I ask you something? You mentioned that the current childcare facilities have more capacity than they can fill because of staffing.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, so daycares can be licensed for up to certain amounts of kids per classroom, and a lot of the classrooms, they're unable to keep staff even for the children that they have in there, let alone to be able to staff them to max capacity. So for example, if you can have additional teachers, you could have ten infants at Mercy Childcare Center. However, they can only offer five spots at this current moment.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Okay, next.
And the next individual is Carolina Diaz.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, gracias. Bueno, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carolina Diaz. Yo soy coordinadora en el programa de servicios legales de compañeros. Además, soy madre de dos niñas, una de ocho años y una de tres años. Adicionalmente, sí organizadora comunitaria durante los últimos tres años aquí en la Ciudad de Durango. Desde mi rol como madre, les pido a todos los aquí presentes y en especialmente a nuestra respetada alcaldesa y a nuestros concejales para que, por favor, prioricen el cuidado infantil de niños de cero a cuatro años en el Plan Estratégico de la Ciudad de Durango. El cuidado infantil no solo es necesario, es urgente para garantizar que las familias trabajadoras se reactiven en la economía de la ciudad. Desde mi experiencia como madre, he tenido que trabajar al mismo tiempo que he tenido que cuidar de mis hijas. Esto ha ocasionado graves problemas en mi salud mental, pero lo más terrible de todo es que también ha causado graves problemas en la salud de mis hijas. Mi pequeña hija, que tiene apenas tres años, desde su primer año empezó a estar por debajo del peso promedio para su edad y a desarrollar una personalidad demasiado exigente y fuerte para su edad. A temprana edad, ella empezó a demostrar síntomas que no estaban de acuerdo a su edad, todo porque su madre estaba más pendiente de su trabajo que de los cuidados que ella necesitaba. Desde esa terrible experiencia personal que he tenido que vivir, empecé a crear y hacer abogacía para el movimiento de cuidado infantil. En este trabajo me he tenido que encontrar con historias demasiado devastadoras para mí, demasiado crueles. Hemos tenido que escuchar que niños de ocho años se quedan solos en casa cuidando niños de dos y de un año. Estas esperencias realmente han marcado mi vida porque no puedo entender cómo es que nosotros como adultos permitimos que esta situación espase. Estas situaciones me llevan a preguntar cómo estamos en una sociedad en que no somos capaces de garantizar los derechos básicos de los más vulnerables, que son los bebés y los niños. Además, el cuidado infantil es un asunto que nos compete a todos. Recientemente, el Distrito Escolar Nainar ha publicado sus más recientes resultados que evidencian que los niños de familias en las que el inglés no es su primer idioma arrojan resultados académicos muy por debajo del nivel del grado. Y aunque los resultados mejoran a medida que los niños avanzan de grado, la tendencia de los niños multilingües es siempre por debajo del nivel del grado, y esa tendencia se mantiene hasta el grado doce cuando salen en la grabación. Nuestras familias son familias trabajadoras. La mayoría de los padres tienen de dos a tres trabajos, y la mayoría de las madres tienen por lo menos un trabajo. Por lo anterior, el cuidado infantil debe ser una prioridad en el Plan Estratégico de la Ciudad. Garantizar que todos los niños están creciendo, aprendiendo, que están cuidados, y que están saludables es nuestro deber de nosotros como sociedad. Es nuestra tarea garantizar que eso se puede hacer. Por lo anterior, les pido que prioricen el Plan Estratégico el cuidado infantil y que pongan todo su interés, compromiso, y recursos para que en el mediano plazo estas historias no se vuelvan a repetir. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Next.
And Mayor, it looks like one of the prior individuals who requested to speak, Enrique Orozco, had hopped back online. If he's still there, maybe you would allow him to speak?
Yes. Says he's not on. Okay, sorry, thank you.
In the meantime, maybe we can go to the next individual, which is here in person, Gabriela Gomez Ortiz.
Excellent, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Gabriela Gomez Ortiz. I'm a senior at Durango High School. I moved in 2021 from Colombia. I'm here to support my mother and this beautiful community. Shilkay should be a priority in Durango since only a very small number of children from zero to four years old have this care because of the coast, and the Latin community does not have money to pay because it's very expensive, as everyone knows. Also, there is no quote available, so families feel the need to stop working because they don't want to endanger their child, or they see the need to like leave their child with a neighbor, which sometimes is a unsuitable place surrounded by cats, dogs, and other kids. Would have been an ideal place for this infant. As it should be as necessary. Every child deserves with a good education, teaching them how to socialize with other people, and pursue different activities that help them develop themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mayor. That was the remaining individuals on the public comment list. You know, we weren't sure if Enrique was using a different name on Zoom.
Is the end of Los Compañeros?
There's no one else waiting.
There's no one else waiting?
Not in person, no.
Compañeros just raised their hand, so that might be.
Okay. Excellent, let's try that.
Uh hello, can y'all hear me? Hello?
Yeah, yes, we can hear you.
Great. Uh thanks, everyone. My name is Enrique Orozco. I'm the executive director of Compañeros Four Corners Immigrant Resource Center. I just want to thank all the brave voices tonight that uh spoke about how important uh early childhood care and education is. From an organizational standpoint, we absolutely um are in support of this initiative and hope that the city will also uh show its full support of it. Uh and I just wanted to touch on six little points real quick in the two and a half minutes that I have um about why this is important. Uh first, let's just talk about child development. Um early childhood is a critical period for brain development and learning. Uh we want to make sure that all our kids that are in Durango, being born in this area, have access to that development. We know that our Latina youth, because they are uh usually don't have access to this type of early childhood development, that as a result, they tend to be a little bit behind in our uh in our school and in K through five. So we want to make sure they have access to that, so uh they are able to be at the same grade level as as most other kids in our town. Uh workforce workforce participation, if we look at Durango, Durango thrives off tourism. And then we have to think about who's behind that. And when we're talking about uh hotels being cleaned or cooks at a restaurant or busters at a restaurant, those are parents and those parents have trouble getting to work. And as a as a result, could lose could lose hours at work and could lose uh their job completely. As a result, we see families who fall into economic disparity and have trouble uh just living here in Durango. Earlier, it was mentioned, we want to retain these workers. We want to retain these businesses. Well, we have to make sure that we're given equitable tools to our communities to make sure that they are able to live and thrive here. Childhood is child, early childhood care is part of that. And our workforce, especially in the Latina community and the community as a whole, uh needs that type of support. Um reducing inequality, access to quality, early childcare and education can help reduce disparities in academic achievement, as I mentioned before, and socioeconomic status. Uh children from low-income families often start uh school already behind, like I mentioned earlier, and their peers for uh are uh behind from their peers who have a more affluent background. Uh investing in affordable early childhood care and education can help level this playing field and give all children a better chance um a- at society. Um and we want to make sure we're supporting families. Uh affordable childcare will go a long way for not only our immigrant families, but just our community as a whole. Um again, we want to retain people. We want our workforce to stay. We want uh Durango to be a place where people can thrive. Again, we have to give people the tools to be able to live here. So uh as Enrique Orozco and Compañeros, we just want to show our full support for this initiative. And again, thank you, everyone, for um speaking up on this.
Thank you. And then I think we have one more.
Thank you, Mayor. There was an individual, Sandra Ortiz, who wished to speak to wish to speak. Excuse me.
Excellent. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Sandra Ortiz. Soy colombiana, residio en la ciudad de Durango, vivo en Starlight. Estoy acá porque estoy.
Pause that.
Good evening, dear councillors. Uh my name is Sandra Ortiz. I am from Colombia and I live in Starlight, Durango.
Estoy aquí en representación y apoyando el grupo de cuidado infantil porque queremos levantar la voz y deseamos que para los señores concejales el cuidado infantil sea una prioridad.
I am here to speak up in regards to the importance of childcare and we would like to request City Council to make childcare items a priority.
Debido a que si nos damos cuenta eh ahorita en el invierno y en lo que va del ne- del verano, esto no ha habido inconveniente en cu- en, perdóname, en en servicios, en hoteles, en restaurantes, en hospitales.
Uh during the spring and also for uh the winter, we noticed that there has not been inconvenience serving hospitals, restaurants and all the industry of service.
Debido a que la comunidad latina está prestando ese servicio.
And that is because we Latinos are providing that service.
Pero también esto es mucho los sacrificios que tiene que hacer con sus hijos por no tener un cuidado infantil.
At the same time, we make a lot of sacrifices with our children because of the lack of childcare.
Se ven en la necesidad de dejar a sus hijos con un vecino eh en un lugar no adecuado eh con perros, gatos eh donde no van a tener un desarrollo motriz.
Um we oftentimes are forced to leave our children behind with neighbors, friends uh in a place where it's not adequate to provide the childcare that is necessary for their developmental. Uh and also, some of those places are overcrowded, sometimes even with dogs, cats and family members.
Entonces, si nos damos cuenta, la economía de Durango se ve activada por la comunidad latina, pero también esto tiene un fondo y es que necesitamos con urgencia cuidado infantil.
So the point I'm trying to make is that we need to realize that we impact uh our economy in Durango with the labor from the Latin community, the labor force. At the same time, we also need childcare.
Entonces, de este modo, si queremos colocar la mano en el corazón de ustedes, sabemos que alrededor de ustedes también hay niños y de pronto están pasando por esta necesidad y queremos que esto sea una prioridad para ustedes. Muchas gracias.
Therefore, tonight, I'm asking you to please um we're hoping to touch your hearts because we know that you also have children, you're surrounded by children and it is our hope that you can make this a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, good.
No one else had signed up. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Moving on to, we have nothing under fourteen. Now, item fifteen, other new business, fifteen point one, um which is a motion to convene as the local licensing authority to conduct a hearing to consider the revocation of Eighth Avenue Tavern's liquor license. No action is required on this issue. It is moot. We reached or the city reached an agreement um and it's attached in the agenda packet for everybody. Um and then does any uh councillor have any other new business?
Yeah, I um I'm gonna follow up on the comments that were made. I, as a new business item, because the childcare has been always brought up and very little action. At least I, it's far hard for me to bring anything forward. So the comment that you made, I think, would be an easy um new business item to ask, because I can't discuss in detail, but uh the request for support for new business item would be for us to have staff evaluate or get more information on the capacity that existing childcare centers have that is not filled to get an idea of if that's low fly, low hanging fruit, to add capacity and what would they need to uh fill up to capacity from the city if we would be able to help with that. So the request is to direct uh staff or ask my Jose, the city manager, for an update during a study session or a regular meeting, whatever works best, to get a better understanding as a council on capacity from the five childcare centers, but maybe there's more that fall out of that age group, capacity, what is needed, what they would need to fill to capacity and how we could support that.
Often, when these new business items are brought up, I I've sometimes with other people have asked for clarification on some things. More just is it is that okay if I, it's along these same i- items. Have, did we discuss this in our strategic plan? I'm don't update someone that said strategic plan and I wasn't sure if, I can't remember everything we talked about.
Yeah, I uh I don't know if we actually discussed it in our strategic plan, but we've done stakeholder reach out and engagement on the strategic plan, so it may have been something that's coming uh in regards to that, where childcare is is a thing that they're discussing with us. Um but uh it's a part of it, my guess would be, but I don't know if it's anything specifically lined out. And I'm looking at some of our staff members to see if they, if that, if what I'm saying is wrong, they can come out and say it, but uh I don't think that it's anything that has been specifically lined out uh just because we don't have a specific funding source that has been lined out or
Right.
in our realm, so it would be something definitely new.
Well, I know we've discussed this with the county and joint um joint sales tax potentially with the library district that could potentially free up some money. Like I know there's been discussions about childcare potential. Um but I would be, because I wrote that down too, what councillor Bosmans was talking about, about that funding for staffing to help, like, you know, our staff is so creative and we've seen some of these like really innovative solutions to help with housing, to help with economic development. And I I think that potentially there could be some low hanging fruit, that we could potentially find some creative solutions and us give, obviously, I I understand things need to be funded, but it would be, I'd be interested in hearing some, not just that specific thing, but maybe a bigger evaluation of that plus maybe some low hanging fruit we can like talk about now, plus like a direction council could potentially go.
Before we move forward, do we need a second?
Yeah, so you need you need something on the floor. I would suggest that there be a motion to consider a directive to the staff to prepare.
I make a
Information, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to direct staff to uh come to us either during a regular meeting or a study session, providing an update on existing childcare facilities, capacity, unused capacity and what would be needed or what they could use to fill up to capacity and and any other innovative approaches to increase childcare. That's my motion.
All second.
Well, it's more like we have to
Well, do we get to vote to move forward, right?
Oh, we vote and then it's a vote?
Well, but now it's cancelled discussion, right?
Yes.
What what we've
Hey, council.
What we've set up is that if anyone wants to charge the staff or the administration with doing anything, you need a majority of the vote, the council to do it.
Yeah.
So you're just trying to define what you'd like them to do. You've got a motion, you think you have a second, you can certainly ask Jose um how to refine what he can do for you if he wants to have some input at this point. But you're getting to the point where you're gonna vote, so he has an official direction to do something.
And I have, I guess I have some more discussion. Um would we be better used to to leverage the ready grant findings for for this sort of information? Because this this, the ready grant is being, was applied for, hopefully that grant will be um we'll we'll hear back from that grant sooner than later. But that should offer a needs assessment that can answer this exact thing, but and it'll be done probably this summer, so maybe instead of right now putting it on staff to do something right this second, maybe we could kind of wait till the ready uh and see if we get the ready grant um application approved. And then we can better leverage that money towards a specific needs assessment before we kind of go through this. That's just kind of my thought off the top of my head.
And I appreciate that without like duplicating efforts um when we haven't been set up with funding and that sort of thing. So yeah, I I'd support that.
Right. So we have all three minutes, I guess, to comment on the motion that was made. So you made your three. And I'll I'll go last because I
Yeah.
want to add a comment.
Do you have anything?
Well, I do agree that we need to investigate this issue. How to go about it, um I think I'll leave up to the administration. But it seems clear that there is a need in the community.
Melissa, do you have anything?
Yeah, I it there's definitely a need in the community, um but I agree that we need to I'd like to, you know, hear from Jose and also I I appreciate what councillor Woodruff brought up about uh waiting to see what happens with the ready grant, but instead of duplicating services that that might be providing for us to give us insight as to exactly what is needed and how we can best support. It's kind of my only thoughts. I guess I'd love to hear from Jose.
I think I'll take my three minutes. I think the concern is we have, this is, since I've been on council, childcare uh every time the discussion goes on. I would like to know the capacity, what's missing, what we can do. It's it, in my opinion, it's not a big amount of work, but at least it keeps the ball rolling. I understand your point, but it's just another way of pushing it out to the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting. And I am sure that the ready grant uh topic that you mentioned is not going to answer the basic question on what the four childcare facilities have in capacity, lack of capacity and what they need. So I think it's another opportunity if this does not get this new business item to be presented to council does not get support. I think it's just another missed opportunity to move something forward, but it's okay. That's my comment.
Can we, can we get another three minutes to respond?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Um I I think, you know, you put all the eggs in one basket saying that this is not, we don't care and we're just gonna kick the can down the road. Um however, I I feel like maybe if we could answer the question to figure out what capacity there is and how, I think if we can just answer a question, great. But um funding mechanisms and and how we're going to address this as a community, I think involves a lot more engaged conversation with multiple community stakeholders, which the ready grant is going to do. Um and I think the ready grant will also help um answer this question and be a little bit more intentional about exactly what the needs are and what that capacity is. Because this this is more complicated than just like we have five childcare centers and fifteen rooms in each care center. And it's more complicated than that. Um and so maybe if there is direction to simply say, hey, how many care centers do we have? What is their full capacity of their operation at a at a super high level? And what that delta is, I think that's that's a responsible use of of staff time. Um but I think the ready grant will give us more opportunity to really dive down into the details about what we need and how to best address it.
The Alliance does great work and they've done great work with the last ready grant. And if they get this, it'll be everything that we need and like a framework of how to make this successful better than we're staffed and equipped to do it right now, this very second. If they don't get the ready grant, I feel like it is time and don't stop coming to city council meetings because it is time for us to do something else if the ready grant doesn't go through. They did get a fifty thousand dollar donation for this program. The Alliance did through the Buell Foundation gave them a fifty thousand donation for this, so that with the ready grant will move the needle forward on this. If it doesn't, then I think it's time for us to regroup and be more cohesive with it. Um you know, I, my kids are now grown, but it was challenging seventeen years ago to get childcare. I have employees that are struggling with childcare, so I I completely understand. And you know, I'm here to, you know, I know the Alliance will do great things for this and we'll be there to support them. We have a great partnership with them across lots of different playing fields, so.
Um well, thank you both for considering the ready grant, but you know, that's somebody else's grant. What are we gonna do for the city of Durango? Are we gonna rely upon the Alliance to do everything for us? I do think along the lines is uh councillor Bosman said, you know, throwing the ready grant out there by a different organization is just kicking the bucket down the road. So I I do support Olivier's um resolution to have the staff go ahead and do some preliminary um checking and seeing what is available, what's out there, and then that would give us a start. And if other individuals want to work on a ready grant, well, they can start writing the grant.
Just to clarify, the city of Durango applied for the grant and the the
The parameters, did they apply for healthcare or what, you know? I mean, how how flexible is the ready grant? I mean, I, you know, I just think that, you know, it's just pushing it down the road again.
All right.
Just what did it, I mean, uh Melissa or councillor Yusef did ask me a question, so I didn't know if I, I did not not want to be to respond, but if I'm able to respond, I I think I would uh like that opportunity.
Yes, please.
Um this is a shift from a council perspective, and I want to be very careful because I do think childcare is absolutely an issue that we need to look into. Um what I would also say is staffing wise, I don't have a childcare expert on my staff. And so for me to be able to say like, oh, I'm gonna get with the staff, we're gonna go out and find childcare and give you a great recommendation on maybe some of these possible next steps. We're we're kind of starting from ground zero here. I mean, when you even look at how housing was developed, we had to get a housing innovation manager brought in, somebody with expertise that kind of helps us through this because childcare is definitely a different uh regulation that's out there that, you know, municipalities. Um I'm not sure how many have gotten involved, but I know there's way they say I'm not sure how many have gotten involved, but I know there's ways they say can do it with funding, which is the easiest way. I know the county is looking at, I was just having a meeting with Chuck this morning. They're looking at reallocating their lodgers' tax to do childcare. They have a system that they have partnered with, or not that they have partnered, but they have seen work, I believe it was in Eagle County, that they're able to do funding for and provide assistance for childcare, whether it is to individuals who are looking for it or even childcare centers. Finding something like that and getting more information and seeing how the city could possibly also partner in that and maybe providing more funding would be something that gets, that is something that's an easier one to do. Getting into capacities of childcare and how we fit in. I'm a little hesitant in regards on how quickly I can get back to you on that because I don't have somebody who has that skill set. I think if we were going to do a, if there was something that you wanted to have a emotion with, I think it would help us maybe be more of reaching out to our community partners, seeing what is being out there that's being done in ways that maybe the city can partner financially. I think I can get you an answer much quicker on that than I would be in actually having a staff member to start asking about capacities and how do we increase capacity. It's very specific and a very industry portion going through. I think if there's a low-hanging fruit, it's more on where can the city provide funding to assist in meaningful ways for people who are already providing that service and how can we help them have more funding available.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Melissa, did you want to add anything? You had, you didn't talk twice. Are you good?
Yeah, I appreciate, I definitely wanted to hear from Jose and I appreciate what he's stating. And that always makes a difference when we hear from our staff, when we're trying to direct them to do something. And so the other thing that I was going to suggest too is it might give council some clarity if we could see the Ready Grant ourselves and exactly what was, you know, what is, what that grant is all about, how we're partnering with it, when, when, you know, if we could get more information on that grant as well. Dave, it seems like you have a good handle on it, but that might help some of us in understanding how that can help us move forward too. Just a thought.
I can try to get a summary from the Alliance because it's the Alliance and I'm the, I'm like councillor liaison, so maybe I can get a summary of what's going on there and give it out the next, yeah.
Do, Olivia, Ms. Councillor Bosman, would you like to amend your motion at all based upon kind of what Jose's feedback was about kind of information gathering and the capacity of the city?
No, I would like to keep the motion as is and if I would change it, I would like to have an update within a month.
All right. Roll call.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
No.
Mayor Protem Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
No.
And councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Any other new business? All right, so motion for adjournment? Excellent. On favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.